I call the meeting to order, the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees. Oh, that's, that's wrong.
Board of Library.
Library Board of Library Trustees, it says, but the Board of Library Trustees for Grafton. It's August 28th, 2024, and let's start by approving some minutes or not, potentially. So do we have any minutes to approve? I think.
I think the answer, John, is no.
Okay.
Okay, and so, so I am on the tail end of getting April 3rd and April 24th executive session portion together. I was missing some backup documentation that actually allows them to make sense.
Okay.
Okay. So definitely by, we'll tackle these in our September meeting. And who was taking, who agreed, was it Erin agreed to take June or not?
So Erin did, I don't know, not her last, Erin did the minutes for June, but there were some edits that needed to be made, I thought. So, so I think we need to review the edited version, right? Because I don't think we approved the minutes last time for the June meeting.
I was absent. It was, we met a week later than we usually meet.
Okay, that may, that may have been related to some discussion about the inclusion of the, the union rep, I think.
Yes, yes.
Related to that, so.
That is correct.
And we had a vote on it.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll skip the minutes section for now.
Well, I guess just, so I did want to talk about the minutes because, so first of all, like, it's wonderful that you, you hired a new, you know, assistant, you know, executive assistant, so, or at, I'm not sure what.
Admin.
Admin assistant.
Yep.
So that's great, and, and you kindly offered to have her assist with doing the, the minutes. So what I was hoping to do is, you know, talk with her, because what I think, what would be very helpful is if she could do like the initial draft of the minutes, like watch the meeting, do the initial draft, and then I could take the draft and watch them with the minutes, because, I mean, they're each, I mean, the, the recorded meeting, because they're like two hours long, because I'm sure, like, for her, there's going to be some questions about things, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't want to interrupt you on this.
No.
But I feel that before we, we go on with this discussion, I need to say.
Yeah.
A thing or two.
Okay.
Figured it.
We did hire an admin, and they had taken on the task of going through all the old recordings and transcribe them, the minutes. So we do have a fair amount done that I can find for us and submit to the trustees.
Okay.
For approval, and then they, I think they can go up.
Okay.
Because she was doing a fabulous job.
Oh, great.
Very unfortunately, she has decided not to stay with the position.
Okay.
So.
Yep.
She has decided to. To move on from this position.
Okay.
So, so yes to everything you said, except this person is not the one who's going to be doing it anymore.
Okay, but you do have, she did do some work that you can share.
She did a lot of work, actually, yes, yes.
Okay.
She, she went through the, the recordings. They're all up on YouTube.
Yep.
She found them, she.
Wow.
Went through and, you know, took some old minutes to see what the format was.
Yep.
And did, did a great job, which makes it doubly.
Yeah.
Upsetting to me, as if, as if I need another reason to be upset about this situation. It is that she did.
She was good.
Really good work, and so. We'll be moving forward and finding, and we'll be posting the positioning, this is, this is going to come up later.
Yeah.
But we'll be posting the position again, and part of the responsibility is understood that, that this is, is part of their role.
And, but it will be as onerous, because there's not usually.
The backlog will be taken care of, right.
And apologies.
Usually it will be, moving forward, you will be doing the minutes.
Yeah.
Which is not a big ask.
So if you are able to share what she did, like normally when we review them, it's like more current, but because they're older, I'm, and, you know, I volunteer to do the, the minutes, but it is a very big task.
Yep.
If you share them, I'll, I'll read them and watch the minutes, just to make sure that things make sense to me. Everybody else still has to review them, but just that it's not going to be as fresh in everybody's mind as normal.
Of course, of course.
So.
You think you can do that and get it done?
Um, it, well, it depends on when I get them, like if I, you know.
What, why don't we?
That might be hard, hard to happen.
So we'll, why don't we kind of take that specifics online, I guess? Carrie, you're, you're tasked with some of the minutes, but then maybe we can talk offline about if you need help or anything like that, or.
Well, Tom, you said she completed the majority of the outstanding minutes, so they're done. It's really more like reviewing, so.
I think, I think, you know, I'm not sure about every single one, but I know that she, I think she was pretty much caught up.
Okay.
So.
So why don't you share what you have with everybody, but just, and everybody needs to review them. The whole board needs to review them, but I'll, I'll, before our next meeting, I will, you make an effort to watch the recorded minutes.
It's a lot for you to do. How many minutes are there, like five?
Yeah.
Five. I don't see how you're going to do that. Is that really necessary, you think?
So, yeah, so that's what I'm saying is, why don't, why don't, Tom, you, you get what, what Caitlin had done to Carrie? And then Carrie, why don't you reach out if you think you need, need some help?
Or do you want us all to look at them?
I think, I think that Tom should send them to the whole board, because the whole board should see and check them, because there might be some things that the board, like, looks at, it's like, wait a second, that doesn't make any sense. But, but I guess the serial conversation is, I guess, the only issue, right? Because.
Well, so it would, I mean, I think we could take the minutes and review them, and then for next meeting, that's when we would have that conversation.
Yeah, so maybe, yeah, so if Tom sends minutes to everybody, everybody looks at them, and then if I watch the minutes and have any comments, I'll, I'll edit it and then share that with everybody, just say, I made some edits based upon, you know, you know, the watching. But everybody else can, if they don't have major things, just kind of take notes and then compare the two.
Is that like five meetings we're talking about? Is that going to be?
Um, it's one, two, three, four, five. I think it's, I think it goes back to March.
Yeah, it is back to March.
So it might be more, closer to seven.
But one of them was done.
See how you can do it.
So June was done, but it, it needed some tweaks. That was Erin did, did, okay. The, the thing I'll mention is, and I don't know if this was done for Caitlin, is that, that, I know I do it, I've done it for my other committee, where if I, then chair of my, another committee recently, would send to the clerk the word document of the agenda, and it was from that basis that that individual had an editable doc already in hand versus trying to create minutes from a blank slate. And so I guess as a best practice, if you're trying to create minutes that don't yet exist in any draft form, you'd want to obtain, I guess, from you, John.
But we don't have that, though.
We save the agendas, I have every, I save.
No, no, what I'm saying is, but you don't get it in a Word document, do you? In other words, so what I'm saying is, is that whoever's going to scribe and put draft minutes together that don't yet exist, the easiest way to do it would be to obtain the Word document version, because it's already, it's already formatted. You could just space, 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 and then type in your notes versus work off a blank piece of paper. You know, it just makes it easier for the scribe.
I get it.
To do that, but the other piece is that we had, there was a couple of moving parts that have it so that, like, all right, so we have a chair and a vice chair. We don't have a clerk, because one of our policies, working in harmony with, I don't, I think it's the union agreement, that we don't step on their toes, but the idea, I, I don't know if there's anyone of the staff that's willing to do this, or whether it would run afoul of the agreement, but I can't imagine we shall be stifled from hiring someone in the interim or paying someone. Maybe there's another person that is willing to, that does things for another committee that is willing to step in and do this. In other words, we, we've agreed that a clerk is not needed for this committee, because there's a paid staff member, but that staff member hasn't existed for scribing since March. You know what I mean? And so.
Yeah.
Maybe there's somebody that would be, could we find out, didn't the town, the town administrator's office might know, the TA?
Maybe, and I, I don't know the union agreement well enough to know whether that would be running afoul of anyone working extra duty, even if they were paid.
Because it's part of a particular, as I understand it, because it's part of a particular position's.
Right.
Description, it would be out of scope for other positions.
Even if they were willing to get paid.
It has to be another person that's not a library staff.
They're so stretched as it is.
There are some people, I think, that do it for other committees. I know that, they hire them.
Is that a non-union position, the assistant, or?
No.
Union position.
Everything is union, he's the only.
He's the only one. I didn't know if the assistant was not, okay, so, gotcha.
So I, that's, maybe call the, call the town administrator and ask him who does the scribing? Because I know there are some committees.
Scribes for various committees.
I know, I know there's one for affordable housing.
Okay, so could we get a interim scribe until we have someone?
And we'll pay him.
Hired.
We used to pay, years ago, there was a woman that we paid, Marilyn, and she, yeah.
Is that, what budget would that come out of, I guess?
It would probably come, it would probably come out of the budget that is not being used to pay the person who's not there.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
All right, so that's already accounted for.
It, it should be.
All right. Okay, so we'll defer minutes till next meeting. We'll see if we can get an interim scribe, but I guess, would we all agree that we will try to move forward with the minutes that we do have from Caitlin and Roger?
Yep.
And Erin?
Yeah. I, I'm confident.
Please send to everybody, they don't, yeah, okay.
I'm confident that we can catch up.
Yeah.
By the next meeting, and if we, if we, I'm surprised that the town clerk hasn't reached out and said, hey, what's going on? I, I've seen on social media that someone made a comment that library trustees haven't, you know, it's posted minutes since like February.
Okay.
And so, you were going beyond six months now.
All right, and, and maybe Doug and I can lean on people to make sure that either, you know, you're able to get them done, or, you know, if we can step in and assist if, if that's.
Yeah.
Not able to happen.
And I, I think, I, I think also the other thing is, is that I know it's been, I can only speak for myself, it's been my own personal style to, everyone knows me as being long-winded and, and printin' and, and speaking, but I think we all need to remind ourselves that minutes are not verbatim. It's just, it's a high-level capture of.
Yeah.
What went on, as, as long as, you know, you're capturing the essence of the conversation at a high level in recording all votes accurately, they don't need to be, you know, a dissertation, that's all.
Okay.
If we remind ourselves of that, it may make the task easier, if we, we tend to be long-winded like me, so.
Okay.
Anyway.
All right, let's, let's move on then. Approving bills. Would anyone like to make any motions?
Uh, I'll move that we approve warrant number six and the amount of $10,108.89 with the sources of income in the handout, uh, the sources of, well, the, the accounts as listed in the handout.
Okay.
Do you want to just do all together?
Oh, we could, all right.
Let's do that.
I, I move that we approve warrants number six, seven, and eight. Six in the amount of $10,108.89, number seven in the amount of $28,760.50, and warrant number eight in the amount of $4,0838.61 with the sources of funds as listed in the handout.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion made and passed. All right, so we'll move on to ongoing business, grant updates, MPLCP building program grant update. Would that normally be Doug?
No, he's done.
Okay.
No, that should be Tom.
Do you have anything?
No, no, I don't.
Okay.
I think, did we say we were closed with them?
Or is this the one that we were supposed to remove?
Probably, because the only thing we have now, we got the lead, lead certification, and we talked about how that could be used for projects.
Yeah, I think maybe Doug had said that.
Yeah, so I think we're done.
Okay.
There's no more work.
All right, so.
As far, but as far as the, all right, so we got the check, all right? And please, someone jog my memory as to that check.
Can be, it can be used for any, 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 like, any building-oriented projects.
And so it got, it was received in, in, in the fiscal year that was before '71, but it allows, it can be carried over.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah.
So it's our money, it doesn't, it doesn't go back into the general fund.
No.
Gotcha.
No, that's my understanding, if you talk to Doug. That's why he thought that could be used for, we have issues coming up, right? With, we need those doors fixed, the flood doors.
Right.
The doors for the flooding, and I thought there were a couple other things I know we've been talking about, but maybe haven't been resolved.
So who would know exactly the, the whole, the parameters of everything that can and can't be used for? Does it have to be green-type stuff, or?
No, 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 it isn't. It's just money, we could spend it. That's my understanding, you can talk to Doug.
Building-related, right?
Yeah, building-related, you can talk to Doug.
Yeah, and we did talk about it at last meeting, Roger, so if you watched, like, the last, the meeting.
I was remiss, I'm going to have to watch that meeting.
I think it would be helpful, because there, we talked a lot, a lot in that meeting.
You know, if you take notes during, while you're watching.
Oh, okay, now I'm on the hook, okay, I'll be on the hook, I guess, if I'm going to be watching anyway, I guess, maybe I'll take notes. You just give me the word version of the agenda.
Yeah, uh, yes, I do, I think I do have that one. The last one and this one were created by me, so I can do that. Okay, um, all right.
Unless Caitlin's already done it, no?
The last meeting, I'd have to check, I'm not sure which one.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Children's room update, Tom.
Sure. So, since our la, since your last meeting, the installers came and started laying the carpet, and that has gone swimmingly, that's, that's really positive for us. It was done in, in two steps, and we are pretty close to winding down those steps. So all of the furniture and shelving units were on one side of the room, leaving the other side clear for the installers to come in and start laying carpet, which they did. When they were done, there were some minor issues that needed to have them come back, because there was some, some of the tiles just hadn't taken, and so they needed a little additional adhesive. Company was fine about that, they were great about coming back and fixing them, the place looked wonderful. Meyer is the company that is the mover, they came in, moved everything from one side to the other.
On Monday, they came back?
I lose track of the days, I'm shocked, I'm sorry, I don't believe that was.
So I think they were supposed to come back on Monday, right?
They did not come back yet.
This was, this is previously, actually, hold on, hold on a second, hold that thought. No, this was to just move all the shelving.
Okay, the first move.
And the furniture over onto the side that had just been laid, so that the carpet installers could get into the section that had not been done, that was underneath all the furniture and the shelving units. And so they were able to get into there and lay down the carpet. Again, looked good, there were some spots that needed some additional.
Put the peep down and, yeah.
My staff came and went through and marked certain areas that needed additional attention. And so the, the company, the installers came back and took care of that, place looks great. The other issue, issue, the other thing that they had to work on was the, the cove, the trim around the outside of the room. We were a little concerned about that, because it was out of stock, the one we were supposed to use. They brought samples, sample pictures, and I looked at those, and we found one that actually matches the carpet better than the original one that we had, so that's all done, and, and, and spread around the room, it looks really good.
So they finished the cove?
They finished the cove, yeah, yeah. No, when, when they get in, they're, they're quick, they're quick, and.
Did they do that last week, or this week, the cove?
They did that, it was the, it was the end of last week.
End of last week, okay.
And then, so now we just have to wait for the movers to come back and distribute the furniture and shelving units where they need to go. So before, it was just, let's just move them all to the other side of the room. Now it's a little more detailed.
They need like two days back.
Where it's, well, it's going to, I mean, they have it, they have a floor plan, and they have to put everything back in, oh, this, this goes against this wall, and, you know, putting the shelves where they need to be. So, so they're going to come back and do that. They are scheduled to come next Tuesday. The delay on that is just twofold. One is that the supervisor, the, the person who's going to be running that unit got COVID.
Oh, no.
So they had to delay on that, and it's also a very busy time of year for movers, with getting kids back to the public healthists and everything, so it's hard to get a mover right now. But they've been great working with us to schedule, and we are all set for next Tuesday, and they think that, they were saying two days that, to get things back to where, what they need to do.
But that's like the big move, that's not like the detailed move that the librarians, you know, staff needs to do.
Perfect segue, thank you, Carrie. So then, once they get the, the furniture and shelving around the room, I've been meeting with my staff and the children's room staff, and we are not convinced that everything is still in order. So it's going to take a little while for them to get things patron-ready. So getting the, getting all the books back where they need to be. You know, if you think about the, the frantic moving, the night, you know, the time of the flood, I'm sure people weren't thinking about, well, let's make sure we keep these in call number order. So it's going to take a little time for them, once, once they can get back in.
And we're short to staff people in the children's room now.
And we are also short two people in the children's room because of the recent resignation. So we've lost one full-time worker, and another one, while moving some furniture, was injured, and.
On the mend, she was, she was at the library on Saturday, so she's in a boot, but she's.
Yes, but she's not able to work.
Not working, no, she has a tumor.
Right, so.
But she's within good spirits.
She is, is still out on.
Medical leave?
Medical leave, thank you. I want to make sure.
She was elevating her foot when she was there, so.
She's doing that a lot, yes. So, so we are a little short-staffed, but everybody is on to pitch in and get that done, and, and the rest of the staff can cover areas as needed to make sure that the children's room staff has the time to get in there and get that set up.
Do we have an idea of when that might be done?
You know, I was, when I started with this process, I was much more comfortable giving dates, and then things like, oh, somebody got COVID, oh, it's, you know, we need to have the people back in to do some retouching. So I know next Tuesday is when the people are coming back for the movement, and that's going to be two days. So middle of next week, we're going to have the children's room back in to start setting up. But what I'm looking at is probably the end of September. All right.
Is there anything we can do to celebrate that? I mean, would it be worth it to hire any more, to hire temps?
Not really, thank you, but.
It's just been a long time.
I completely understand, but it's, it's such fine-tuned work that you need to have people who, who really know the room.
Okay.
I'm, you know, I've, I've talked with the, the head of the children's room, and, I mean, we're even cautious about having other staff, other library staff go in, because it's the children's room staff that really knows where things go, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question, Tom. As far as in the area of trust but verify, I know that at the time that the laid-down carpet started to lift originally, and I personally saw that there was a sort of layer, bottom layer and a top layer, and that you'd really need to, in repurposing those, those tiles, make sure that you got completely underneath, so that the top would not separate from the bottom. And my question is, knowing that you having mentioned that some of these tiles needed to be touched up, is there a, for lack of a better term, like a maintenance plan or a warranty plan that if these, if any of these rugs pieces start to come up, and they may not come up at the seams, they could come up in the middle and bubble? What is in place with this installer to come back and remediate any of this? I'm, I'm, I, I think that there has to be a certain chance that this may happen, that, that certain tiles may not adhere in the long term, you know?
Well.
Because they're being repurposed.
I don't know if there has been, if there, if we have an agreement with them or not. I'm just not, I'm not familiar with that, because I wasn't in those, those types of negotiations.
Yeah, I, I would, I would want to, wherever these agreements are kept, I, I would want to have us have a clear understanding sooner rather than later as to if, say, two weeks from now, we see some of these things starting to decompensate in any way, shape, or form, you know, and it's not only about looks, it's tripping hazards, if things bubble, if things, if things separate at the seams. I would want to know that you and the staff would have someone to call who has an understanding, okay, I'll be there, because it's my responsibility to sort of warranty this. So I don't know where that agreement is?
Yeah, I, so I don't, I'm, again, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay.
So I don't know. I will say, though, that the issues that we were experiencing were just in the initial installation. Some, you know, a corner here hadn't gotten enough adhesive, you know, strip along, you know, that had been laid against a wall, wasn't adhering. That's why we're, we're doing such due diligence now, to make sure that we, we recognize, we identify all of these proactively, so we make sure that they're addressed before we get all the furniture and everything down. Is there, is there a possibility that at some later date, something is going to pop up? I mean, I, in theory, I could say, I guess so, but.
And the reason I ask is that it seems like these particular type of tiles, that there is a certain type of, a person with a certain skill set or a certain type of glue, that I couldn't just go in and know how to do that, you know? And so who would we call is, is, is something I would want to see.
Well, but we have the maintenance, I mean, the, the town, you know, provides maintenance services for library, like the cleaning, you know, services and everything, or through.
No, but we had, we had a, a non-town vendor put this in, and so I'm wondering, is the town equipped to do things on the mend?
I think you're going to have to talk to Evan or William Blake.
Yeah, I mean, they entered into the agreement.
They're the ones that did the whole agreement.
Right, so they're the ones who negotiated, they worked, so they worked with the installer. You'll see some of this when you watch last month's video. They worked with the installers, they worked with the initial architectural schema for it, and they worked with the carpet manufacturers to make sure that we were good moving forward. I was there for, when the initial laying installation was taking place, the supervisor from the installation company was explaining that the way that these tiles are made, the intent is, because it's for a children's room, right? So if somebody spills some tempera paint on it, you don't want it to be like, oh, well, you know, so much for that. They, they are removable, and they, and it can be placed down again.
Yeah, we have spare tiles.
We have, we have spare tiles, we have.
It's not a one piece of rug.
Right, right.
But does each tile, if it needs to be replaced, does that get glued?
The glue, so the glue actually is, is not adhered as much to the tile.
It's to the floor, yeah.
As to the surface.
Surface.
So the, the adhesive is, is applied to the surface, and then the tile is placed on, into, into that spot on top of the adhesive.
Okay.
So that it's, there wasn't, you know, there wasn't a stripping of the, the tiles that needed to be done. It was really just a, a more comprehensive laying of the adhesive to the flooring to make sure that it goes in.
And what I, what I actually witnessed personally is that, that it was, that the, that the tiles have a top and a bottom, in that I actually saw where the adhesive stuck to the bottom, and then the top of the thing came up and kind of, kind of got separated. And so what I'm wondering is, is that if you could find out through either Evan or whoever houses documents, who do we call? You know, you had mentioned, well, it's, you know, we have maintenance people. I don't know if they're equipped or even have an understanding that they may be called to do any remediation of. I don't know if they're equipped or even have an understanding that they may be called to do any remediation of any tiles that may come up. And so I I I would want to know, I mean, since we've had so many issues with these tiles thus far. It's plausible that we may have a one-off tile or or.
But we're expecting a one-off tile. Like, the one-off tile is normal.
No, but who would do that? Who would do that? So I think what Roger's trying to say is, we should have a plan in place.
Should have a plan in place.
I'll look into that. I'll I'll check and I'll find out because we can't answer that question right now because I just don't know whether we have one or not.
Right.
So I I I think we would just keep circling this issue.
Yep.
The tiles look great, room looks great, we're gonna get everything done, we're gonna get the people back in.
Yep.
And I'm I'm excited about that. I I know that uh, you know, the patrons is running short on on patrons.
Yeah, and Tom, so so can you um maybe for. Whenever you have it available, just confirm some sort of maintenance plan?
Yep.
And then that we have the extra tiles as well. I just wanna make sure that we have those.
We definitely should have extra tiles.
We should have extra tiles, but I wanna make sure that we do.
And also too, just that they're stored properly, like I think they're stored in a space and that was, that we just wanna make sure that they're. You know, covered and everything. So just.
Right now, they're all still, you know, all the extras are there.
Yeah.
So we can store them where we think is just makes sense.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Alright.
Thank you.
So I guess just with your guys, so I know we can't commit to like a specific date, but is there any communication on, you know, that's gonna go out just to say that. It's in process, like on the website, because people are dying to get back in the room and we want, you know, we want everybody to get back in. We know that we have to, you know, do it, you know, the the right way, but. But is there gonna be any communication on the website to say, like an updated communication to say that, you know, we're, you know, we're working hard to get the room. You know, back in shape, we're looking forward to getting it open soon, just just because when people don't hear. Here, you know, they, you know, they sometimes.
Just like a status update?
Yeah.
Yep, yeah.
Cause we did communicate about it being, we've done that.
Right, and and we we have and, you know, like in in my monthly newsletter each month, you know, there's a building update and and a large portion of that is always in. Covering what's going on with this. Um, and uh, you know, we we have been posting updates on the website. I I can just make sure. That we have something most recent up.
I thought.
I think that's good because there's been talk, we've all heard that some negative talk.
Yeah, we've heard it too.
Yeah, okay. Alright, yeah, so if you can check and see if there's any sort of social media posts going out or something like that.
I think on the website, it's very important.
Well, I think on the website, because because not everybody gets the newsletter. I guess that's the, because the the last update, so if I go to the website and this is, I looked last time. But I'm looking right now, children's room update was posted on June fifth, twenty twenty four. So it, you know, it, so it does, you know.
Yeah.
Um, so it says at the bottom, children's activities will continue throughout the summer months with staff using community room, children's program library and the friends of library space. So I maybe just look at it and just, you know, kind of refresh it.
Yeah, and it needs to be done.
And we don't have to provide any dates, but, you know, some nice pictures of the carpet.
Talk about what happened because our last meeting, we were sort of, we were surprised, you know, how the the changes that were done and it sounds for me. It sounds to me and I feel comfortable that it worked what was done.
Yeah.
So it's good if we communicate back, because we were, at that meeting, we didn't know the plan had changed and we hadn't been informed, so we were we were a little bit excited. But it sounds good because obviously we wanna get it done, but I think that makes sense.
Of course.
Okay. Alright, um, anything else on the children's room update?
I think, just waiting to get back in.
Okay. Um, yeah, but uh, I'll ju- I'll just add, do reach out if there is something that you think the board could do to help it, to help expedite things.
Yeah, especially if there's like funding things that we could, you know, approve.
Alright, uh, fiscal year twenty four and twenty five budget update.
Yeah. So um. Just a few things. And uh, and and they'll come up later again in the new business, but um. Just wanna make sure I got everything covered in there. So the uh. We talked about this a little bit last time, this is kind of carried over from last time, that um the end of the fiscal year. Ended uh. Stressful. Because of the miscalculations that had been carried over. And so fiscal year twenty four was was very difficult because we were. The goal that we that had been laid for us was not the appropriate goal. And so we had to. Can only think of the word scramble to make sure that we were spending enough to ensure that we were going to. Hopefully meet the requirement for MBLC. To to ensure funding and to ensure that we would still be certified library. Why I'm also including fiscal year twenty five in this is because the, when the plans were made and when fiscal year twenty five budget was created. It was not, well, it was, it was still using the old incorrect funding goal. So um. The thought was that we had to hit thirteen percent of our of our budget on materials. And um, it actually was supposed to be fifteen percent. So um, which, when I say it doesn't sound like much of a difference. It is, it is. When you're talking about that much money, it's 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 quite a bit. So um. We were required to to do some, we overspent in order to make sure that we were meeting those goals in the fiscal year twenty four. And then uh. I've also discovered uh certain areas of fiscal year twenty five, such as from the materials budget, that again, we're just, we're using the lower number, the percentage. And so the amount that was allocated for those is is not um not quite sufficient. So. I've been in talks with the town.
Captain.
Town accountant.
Thank you.
Finister.
Let's keep, John, I'll just keep looking at you whenever I can, I'm trying to look to you.
Just mix the.
Finance and uh, so we have a, we have a pretty good plan on how how that will be. Figured out. There there are areas that we traditionally don't spend as much and so we can, we can. Certain ways move some money when needed. Right now, there are two, a couple of pressing things, which this will come up later again in the new business, the state aid assistance approval, but would you like me to touch upon it now?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be good.
Okay, so um, what it comes down to is that there was some overspending of, and I I, did people get my notes?
I I have them in front of me, yeah. You sent them this morning.
Great. So there was an overspending at the end of the year of thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty one dollars and twenty three cents, I believe.
Yes, it was twenty.
Is it twenty three? Thank you.
Yep.
So that was, that was the overspending that we, that was in part what we had to do to to shore up, to to make sure that we were hitting our thirteen.
And when you say overspending, overspending versus budget, but but spending to meet the target that we needed for MBLC.
Right, right, right. So, yeah, and you know, I'm. I don't know if overspending is really the appropriate term.
Over budget.
But it it spent over what we had allocated in the original budget. So when I say overspending, that's what I mean. I don't mean like, we could have bought the paper back, but we bought the hardcover. I mean that we were spending. Money additional to what was originally allocated for for these for these purposes. So uh, this this money um needed to be paid previously. And so it was done with the gift money to cover that and now we are asking that the, that state aid be approved to cover this. So that we can pay back our gift account because we use that for some other things. There are also, uh, there's also some money encumbered, which is about, is eighty five hundred dollars. This is primarily for, it was part of the the spending at the end of the of the fiscal year as well. As well as just other bills that that came in towards the end of the year. They were too late for us to get in before the close of the fiscal year. And so as I'm learning, when things, at a certain point, we gotta cut, the finance department has to cut it off. And um, the bookkeepers say we're gonna hold those until we open up that money, which I think is in September. So um, so there there is also this money that's encumbered. Again, some of that was, as I mentioned here. Um, like things that we initially ordered, but then were were backordered, so they didn't come in until like in in the beginning of of July. Still count for us in in July, but we weren't able to then write, write the checks to to pay the invoices that we needed to. So we're requesting that that from the state aid as well. Then, and as I had mentioned about fiscal year twenty five and there being some some oversights. The Xerox maintenance, the Xerox plan that we have, which is a huge program in our in our library for our patrons. We have an annual uh, an annual agreement with them and it's about eight hundred dollars a month. Uh, and that unfortunately was not included in the fiscal year twenty five budget.
And we've, we've already signed the agreement with them?
Yeah.
And but it's annual, so we can look at it again next year, because I know we've talked about Xerox before.
We'll say one or two Xerox machines?
It's two.
There's two.
Two, we have one on each floor.
Yeah, this this was talked about at length previously and maybe that's why it got left out of the budget is because it was, there was a discussion to. Get rid of one of the leases on those. And.
I don't think that's right.
I thought we changed our minds and thought we should have it because it was not.
Yeah, that was, that was the original discussion, but I'm saying maybe that's why it got taken out of the budget.
I don't think anybody consciously took it out. I think it was that they, you know, we didn't have, Tom, we didn't have, like, when the budget was, it was done. Yeah, it was, it was a rough budget.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, it was.
So is that still operating at a deficit? I know that usage had kind of tapered off and it it wasn't paying for itself. In other words, we were running in the red on the lease, that the amount of patrons that were paying to use it, that that we weren't recouping. That there was a, that that whole program was running at a deficit.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure about those numbers. I was unaware of that. And I'm not sure whether the the patrons are paying for the the lease.
They they pay the copies.
No, they pay for copies.
No, I understand that.
No, that's what he means.
That's what I mean. If the, if the amount that they are are using.
Generated, yeah.
Right.
Covers the lease. But I would, I would say that that plus the amount that the staff uses it, I would think certainly does. Because it's very important for us to have. We were printing things all the time for our usage. So when we're having programs, it's it's invaluable for us to have that available to us to be able to. Print coloring sheets to put down in the in the children's room, print activity sheets, print uh, you know, uh, things for for all programming. So. As to, if the question is, is it being used or are they both being used? They certainly are. They certainly are.
Yes, yeah, I think that's what.
And I I will say that, you know, one time recently when we had some maintenance from them and we had to. Shut down the the stations for a while. Our patrons were were waiting, waiting at the door, is it back up yet? And we got those back up quickly because um the faxing and the scanning and the copies are are huge for our patrons.
If I could ask, um, I recall that our more than a few occasions where we discussed. The whole idea of needing to maintain that percentage of spending for state aid. And that we had actually questioned, are we sure that thirteen percent is the right figure? And I don't know where we. I I thought that we were given assurance that thirteen percent was the right figure, if it didn't even come from the state. What kicks us over? Twenty thousand population? Was there some sort of? Uh, it was, we were kind of on the edge there. We were, and I, so.
I believe that was discussed at the last.
We, we talked, we talked, the last meeting, and Tom spent quite a bit of time talking to the MBLC and working with them to make sure that we didn't lose our accreditation. So, thank you very much for doing that.
Alright. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Alright, awesome.
Weekly, I'll just say, it's twenty thousand and it's the fifty hours a week are the two things that determine what your percentage is gonna be. So number out, number of hours a week, you have to sort of hit a certain minimum. We're actually over on that. The minimum for us is fifty and we're we're doing fifty eight hours a week, so we're good there. The percentage based on population, the larger an air, a population you have, the lower percentage you actually are expected to contribute. So even though it sometimes doesn't seem logical, the smaller the town, the more we're expected to give of our percentage of our budget. So for instance, a place like Springfield where I was, we were only at twelve percent because we were a hundred and fifty thousand people. Our budget, I mean, my spending budget was almost what our entire library budget is, right? So you're spending so much, there's only so much you can buy.
So we're not at twenty thousand yet, is what you're saying?
So being being at twenty thousand, I think it's like, it's it's like between fifteen and twenty thousand. I can't remember exact cutoff, but that was what put us in the fifteen percent.
Okay, thank you.
But this, I uh, this was uh, I worked with Eileen in my department. Um, and she was fantastic about looking into this. And then I had numerous conversations with multiple people at both CW Mars and MBLC to make sure that that we were. We finally had the correct numbers.
Oh, good. That's, that's a sigh of relief because ten percent of our budget.
Well, you know, well, as of fiscal year twenty six.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Well, now we're to put in.
Mm-hmm, and one more time to spend it and not have to rush at the end, which I'm sure everybody will appreciate.
That that's not, that's already been remedied. Trust me, yeah. We've already addressed that in the library.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Yep.
Okay, so. Uh, so you've covered the three different. Uh, amounts and that you have the total there of thirty two thousand.
Yes.
Fifty one dollars and twenty three cents.
Right.
Is the, I guess, is state aid our only option for the funding on this? And is there anything, I mean, is there any other debate we can have on this or is this just a?
I mean, at last meeting, we used some of the other two trusts, so.
Yeah, we did that. I thought we covered that, didn't we?
Not not this. We we used it for other, you know, we approved it for something else, not for this.
Oh, yeah, that was for the Coupa.
Yes.
So how much, how much?
Thirty two thousand and do we have enough in state aid?
Oh, we're short thirty two, okay, okay.
Thirty two, so.
Well, okay, so so just, I'll clarify a little bit. So the thirty two is including the ninety six for the um, the copier lease.
Okay.
So that, so like right now, we don't owe ninety six hundred dollars. We owe eight hundred dollars for this month. It's an eight hundred dollar a month lease.
Okay.
So.
Well, you know, we're gonna owe it. We can't get it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and that's why I included it because, you know, it's it's.
Me as well, like.
I I guess I would encourage at least earmarking some of the money that eventually it's going to be used for this, even though it doesn't have to be, I mean.
Yeah.
If you, you know, if you would like to discuss other ways to do that one, you know, I would understand that.
Yeah, so I mean, as we talked about a little bit, there is the, I think one of the gift accounts gets filled with money from the patrons for copies, right? Believe that's what happens.
That's not the gift. I don't think, I don't think the copy.
Or there's some, some account, I guess, that that gets filled, so.
Yeah, there is, there is an account that gets referred.
So if, I mean, we can in theory approve, you know, up to the ninety six hundred dollars, but then we could use that money.
Could be used elsewhere.
As it comes in um, to bring that amount down.
They, I think the gift fund is kind of the libraries more and they they used it to cover some of the money, so they're looking to replenish the gift.
Right, right, right.
Oh, sorry.
So the the thirteen nine five one twenty three, that, those were, those were invoices that needed to be paid. So since we couldn't use the state aid to do that.
Okay.
We were able to use the gift money because we could spend from that on our own.
Right, sorry.
So this money will go back to the gift account?
Yep.
But we need to get it from somewhere. That's what we gotta figure out.
Yeah, so the thirteen thousand goes back to the gift account, but what I was saying is that, we can approve up to the ninety six hundred dollars for the copiers as as part of this. Money from state aid, but then as we have money for the copier account that comes in from patrons, we can spend that. we can spend that first, so.
That would be used for, right.
Right.
Right. So if we were to put this money aside, that would be a guarantee that we have.
Right.
Money to cover it, but it's not our first.
Yeah.
And this is all through 2025?
Right.
Okay, so in future budgets, we have to accommodate all these changes that you've discovered that need to be made. Okay.
In, in the budget, so I know you're saying that the Xerox, the expense, the lease expense wasn't included in the budget. But was the projected revenue from the copies included in the budget? Or is that, were they both left out? And then we just think that there, it's not going to be enough to cover it. Because I think that's probably why it was left out in years past. Because they said, oh, we know this will be covered. It's a wash.
It's a wash, right.
But now it's not washing, like it's.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Right.
Yeah, I almost want to say this is actually the exact start of the conversation that we had about the Xerox copiers last time was because we had to pay for the lease. Because, because it wasn't.
We weren't getting enough money in from the copies.
But the, I, I guess the discussion's not about whether or not they get used, because they do get used.
Yeah, we're done with that. We've moved on.
Okay, but the money encumbered, I have a question about that. So we can't just roll that into the current budget because presumably that's.
No, he's saying it wasn't, the 9,600 is not in the current budget.
I'm not talking about the 8,500. The 8,500. Because presumably, that same thing's going to happen next year. Where we have 8,500 or whatever it is that couldn't get put onto FY25 and needs to get rolled into FY25.
They're trying not, they're trying to not do things arriving as much in July. Like you're always going to have some, right? But you're going to try to not have that happen at the end of the year.
Right, so the, right, the, the, the part that, of why it needs to be encumbered is because of the.
The gift account.
It was the bottleneck at the end of the, of the fiscal year.
The 13,951 was the bottleneck. So we are anticipating we won't have the bottleneck. We might have some, need to do some encumbering, but hopefully not 8,500 next year. But it, but it will probably be something.
You know, we will have some because again, the, the amount that was put into the budget is not, was not the 15%. But that I, that I see will come from else, from other places. That won't, that wouldn't need to be come from state aid.
So we have, we have town meeting coming up in October. This is something that would need a warrant article from maybe Free Cash or, or some place other than our inner workings, in our inner fund, our, our internal funds? I mean, I, I've seen, I mean, over the years, there's, there's all sorts of.
I'm kind of, I have to say, I'm getting confused. What you, so we're talking about, you're talking about past budget that we need to pay, right? Because you guys have already paid it. And how, what, okay, so where, how much is that? And then the future, what is the?
The past is the 14, the 13, 90, so the 14 and the 8,500. The 9,600 is a shortfall this year for the Xerox. The totals are 32. Those three together are 32.
That's what I'm. So if we do that, we're just, we're okay for 2025, but.
No. No, so that's what, that's what we're trying to get at is.
That's what I don't understand.
So the last year's budget was for, based on the 13%, which is $135,000 of spending we needed. But.
We needed, we did 166, so we were.
Right, so we needed more. We needed the 15%. And then this year, it's the same thing. Because this, this year's budget was based on last year's budget, which was wrong.
Was this year's budget F25 or is it F26?
F25 is the upcoming.
Current.
Or current one.
The one we're in right now, as of July 1st, we're in fiscal year 25.
Okay, so if we pay for this, then moving forward, we'll, we'll know what to budget, so we won't have this conversation again.
Next year, but we're still stuck with the shortfall for this year.
So we need to take care of it. Let's get, let's do that.
So, right, so the, so the 13. The 13 is.
Last year.
Is fiscal year 24.
Yep.
Paying ourselves back.
To go in the gift account.
For the gift account. The 8,500.
And 9,500 for the leases this year.
Hold on one second. Okay, 13, 13, 1300 I wish. 13,000 is the, is, is the money for fiscal year 24 that we had to pay the invoices for. We used the gift account. We're looking to pay that back. Okay. The 8,500 are invoices that arrived too late to be paid. With fiscal year 24, when they were supposed to be. So they're put on hold in effect with the town to be paid. And so we, we need the money to cover that. The 9,600 is, by the way, moving forward, we're going to, we're going to have to pay this. And we don't see it currently in the, in the budget. So if you think that, that this is covered in the budget by the monies, well, we always thought it was a wash, so I can, I can revisit that one. I'd be happy to do that.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't, I think that's why they wanted to. There was talk to get rid of one, only have one copier, and that was the issue. I think so. So I don't think you're going to discover that. I think that would not be a good use of your time.
So I want to, I want to make one more point of a clarification and then maybe we can get to a vote here. So what, I think what Roger was trying to say though is that the fiscal year 25 budget, the budget for the current year is also not correct, right? It's not projected to be 15, based on the 15%, it's based on the 13%. So you said that you've talked to the town and you think that will, the town will figure something out.
We have some, right, we have, there's some other, there's some funding bill to us.
But to Roger's point, do you, do you happen, can, I guess, can you follow up with the town? Just make sure that we don't need any sort of warrant article on town meeting? Just to, is that good enough, Roger?
Yeah, yeah, in other, in other words, basically, we've seen in the fall, there are times where this sort of, call it a supplemental budget, where there's warrant articles, where other departments find themselves in a similar situation. And, and in our need of funds from other places that are freed up. And then we vote on those at town meeting. And the other thing is, is our, we also have warrant articles where we're paying prior year bills. So I guess is that payback to the gift account considered a prior year bill? So all in all, what, what John said is, is this something that can be addressed through one or more town meeting warrant articles to find those funds from outside the library, from other town funds? And that's usually the mechanism by which we do that.
Okay, so I guess the other, yeah, I, I'm a little leery doing that, but I'm very leery doing that. But, but I guess, have we quantified the shortfall? Because like, so you laid out nicely how much, the, the 32,000, which is the lease, and then the, the end of the year spending and the encumbered amount. But what we don't have is the dollar amount of, of the additional spend that we need to do to get the 15% for our FY25. So how much are we short for that?
But that's what Tom is saying is the town should, we should be able to, Tom should be able to work that out with the town.
Right.
To make sure that's covered. And he said he'll follow up with the town to make sure that no additional action is needed on our part or Tom's part to, to get that.
So they're willing to help out with that, but the lease, they, they're like too bad for the lease. Like we have to cover the lease.
Well, I mean, no, I mean, I haven't, I haven't brought this to, this one to them.
Okay.
So, yeah, so why don't, maybe, yeah, that maybe, maybe it makes sense to talk to them and see what they're willing to cover, what they're not. And then we, if we need to, then we can make a vote on, because we don't need the money right this minute.
And that's, that's why I said, right, that this is, you know, this is, this is not something, 9,600 is not something we owe right now.
And the, the 13, 95123 came out of the gift fund. It should get replenished at some point, but we don't have to do that right this minute.
Yeah, he wants us to do it. We want to do it move forward. We should. Let's do that. Because we don't want to have this discussion again. I don't think we need to.
You're saying we don't know where the money's going to come from.
Oh, well, that's, I thought, do we know what we have in state aid?
Do you happen to know our state aid balance?
I don't.
Okay.
So we need, so, yeah, we need confirmation.
I mean, in, in my, yeah, in my opinion then, let's take care of the money encumbered with state aid. Because it, it seems that, I don't think that one would be up for discussion with the town. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so why don't we approve that? And then the overspending is not a real deficit that we have. We'd like to pay it back, but that can potentially wait.
Wait until we meet again to see, should we determine how much we have in state aid?
I think we really need to know the balance of the state aid.
And who can find that out? Is that something Tom can do or should one of us do that?
I can talk to Doug and figure that out. I'm guessing one of us can call the town.
I think you have to.
And do that.
What you're saying is you don't know how much we have. We may not have to, we may not have that.
I know we've been spending.
We might not have 20, we might not have money.
I, I would, I would imagine we do, but I, I would also think we might be getting a little low on it. I don't, I don't know.
So why don't we just wait, like, why don't we find out how much we have in state aid? Find out how much the town's going to spend and then vote on how much we're going to, how much we're going to fund from stated? All of it next month. Like, I don't understand the rush on the 8,500.
Because it's, it's money we owe, right?
These are invoices that are sit, the 8,500 is the one that, that concerns.
We should, let's, I think we should.
I mean, the, the other money concerns we too, because, you know, we, there, there are things that we.
Well, should we?
Use the gift for. The 8,500 particularly concerns me because these, these are invoices that we have in-house for things that we've purchased that are being held just until the money is freed up. So we can, we can pay these.
I was going to say, why don't we, why don't we agree to pay the, the 8,500? Because we think we have that and then find out how much we have in the gift, in that account. Do we need to meet in the state aid? Do we meet, do we need to have another meeting so that we don't have to wait another whole month? Not that I really want to meet again, but it sounds like we shouldn't really wait another whole month that we don't know.
So, so I, the question I have, and this goes back to the whole town meeting issue, is that are we allowed to pay a prior year bill in this fashion?
We've been talking with the accountants.
So, so we're allowed to, we're allowed to pay, we're allowed to pay this bill.
I, I agree with Roger, like it, you said, like you do see that in the, you know, agreeing to pay the prior bills, like it's, you can't just do it.
No, no, I'm saying.
He's been talking to the accountants, right? You've been talking to our accountant department.
But is the method to use our money or town, town meetings?
Oh, you haven't talked to the finance people in, in the town?
About, about these particular issues, no.
Oh, okay.
So.
I misunderstood.
That, that was in regards to John's question about moving forward. Are we going to end up in the same spot? When I discovered that, that the incorrect percentage was used for fiscal year 25, I immediately went to the town to talk to them about this, saying, not enough money had been put aside for, I mean, I'm not sure how much, but certainly not enough for the materials budget, which is what we have to spend in order to be compliant with MBLC. So I spoke to them and was, was assured that, that when that time comes, as we need more money, that there is, that there are additional funds that can be allocated for that.
Do they know that we're going to spend, we're going to pay for the, that we're, do they know, understand that we are, we did pay for this out of the, the 13,000 of the gift account? Do they know that?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I've discussed that. I discussed that with the finance department, what we did.
All right.
When, when we did that, I brought in the town administrator, the finance department, to let them know that we have these bills. It was decided that the best course of action at that time was to pay with the money that we had on hand, which was the gift account, with the understanding, with the idea that, that that would be paid back.
Okay, so at this point, what you're saying is we're just, we, we, the trustees are trying to find a way just to get that money back into the gift account. It's already been paid.
Okay.
Right.
And that shouldn't be an issue. So is someone saying they don't think that's proper? I mean, I, I don't.
No, no, I was referring to the 8,500. And then the other question is, is, did those bills come in or are they dated after 7/1?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
I just want to make sure that if we're, on the 8,500, if we are going to pay those with FY25 funds, that we're allowed to. That they, that they, were they dated in FY24, that even though they were received?
I mean, I, I'm not sure, but I think they're FY24.
But we're talking about paying with the state aid.
Yeah, they just paid, they paid, they came in late, but they were budgeted in 24.
Right.
This happens.
This is, these are things that are fiscal year 24 purchases.
They were invoiced in FY, they are budgeted and invoiced in FY24, but we weren't allowed to cut the check. Because they shut down, they closed the checkbook in June because we're getting, because they have, they have time to close the books.
Right.
So, okay.
I think we just need clarification from the accountant that, you know, what we need to do for the 8,500. Because I don't, if it's, to me, like if it was encumbered, we just haven't cut the check, then, then it's, then they just need to move the, the accumbrance, you know? But I, I think the accountant.
But I think it's, that, that's, that's, I, I think, well, then again, you're an accountant. It's above my pay grade as far as knowing whether Department of, Mass Department of Revenue and municipal finance laws allow us to use FY25 monies for FY24, which had been previously closed out. That's what I'm saying.
That's why I think we need to talk to the accountant, because I am an accountant, but I'm not a municipal accountant. And you're, but you're right, Roger, like on the warrant, there's always like, you know, FY24 bills. That always comes up.
It does.
So why don't we, like, I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting on any of these. I, I'm comfortable funding it, but I'm not comfortable voting right now on any of these without having, you know, without you talking to the accounting. Because I don't want to approve it, mess it up, and then we have more work to undo it. So let's.
And go hitting our.
I mean, we need clarified then.
Yes, please.
And, and, and that we're not unnecessarily racking our brains and hitting our head against the wall trying to figure out where to come up with this money internally. When we've seen the town meeting, prior year bills come from all different external sources.
Exactly.
So.
Okay. So it's, so it sounds like, Tom, another action item for you is to reach out to the town and double check on these FY24 bills. So the 13,000 and if, I guess, I don't know if that one could be paid back. But I guess as a, as a board, we'll check on our state aid balance and just make sure, and maybe we can check on the gift account balances too, and just make sure that it makes sense to pay back the gift accounts. It probably does, but we'll, we'll just, I think it would be better to know the numbers. Check on the 8,500 from FY24 and see if that could be paid with FY25 money.
Or if they already have it, you know, if they already have a bucket for it or something.
Yeah. And then I, I, and I think we, we also kind of decided, like, if you can reach out to the town about the, the copier, because that's something that was also on the, like, part of the budget last year in terms of, it was paid, it was there and we, we had to end up, I think, footing the bill for that, which is fine. But if, you know, I, I think we all know here, it probably should have been in our budget plan. And I'm not blaming anyone for that, but it should have been in our budget plan for this year. Just because it's, it's two copiers that we still have, you know? So. And then, I guess what I would say is feel free to reach out to the board in case, when you do hear back from the town, and if any of this does become a problem where we would need to vote on something before the next meeting.
If there's something urgent, then we're willing to reconvene, you know, to, to do that. And then the fourth item is like, what is the shortfall in the budget for the, the material spend? And, you know, is that going to be covered by?
Yeah.
You know, is it, you know, are, you know, is the town administrator going to find the money for that? Or do we need to, do we need to contribute from state aid or what? What is, what's the solution for that?
Right.
Yeah, and, yeah, that would be great.
Which is great, you know, so hopefully that's, but we don't know, right now, we don't know exactly.
What did you want about the copier, John?
So, I mean, essentially that it was part of our, it was part of our, I don't want to say budget. It was part of the budget last year, but it wasn't on the actual paper budget, so.
There wasn't a line item for it.
Yeah, and I, and I think, for whatever reason, it just didn't get included in the FY25 budget when it really should have. I don't, like, there was always the plan to keep the two copiers and it's just a core feature of the library. Um, I don't, like, there was always the plan to keep the two copiers, and it's just a core feature of the library, so I don't see why it wouldn't have been on the budget if we'd been able to, um, amend the budget properly for FY twenty-five.
And how much money, so, so far, is it, how much money have we taken in for the copies? Cause that, the, the understanding in the past had been that that lease cost is gonna be offset by the, the money that we take in for the copies, and we don't think that that's gonna cover the ninety-six hundred, but, you know, is it gonna cover a thousand dollars, or, you know, how, like, it's gonna cover some portion of it, I would imagine?
Okay, um.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, so, so keep us abreast of any developments with that, and, and definitely reach out if you need actual, uh, funding.
Yep.
For them.
Okay.
Okay, um. All right, any other discussion about FY twenty-four and twenty-five?
Nope.
Okay.
I will do it.
All right, friends update.
Um, you, I think you're asking for approval for the New England Library, the NILA conference, right?
I think that's.
Oh.
Later in the agenda?
I was gonna bring that up later, but, uh, yes.
Why don't, why don't we leave that under state aid assistance approval?
Okay.
Um, to give Tom a little break. So we'll go to the friends update, Carrie.
Sure. Um, let me just flip back over to that. Um, so the friends, um, the friends were able to have their back-to-school book sale, um, this past weekend. Um, it was uh, very well attended, um, and, you know, a lot of, we had a lot of teachers and a lot of members, the other, you know, just general of the community come. We had, um, wonderful volunteers for, from, um, the, uh, Grafton, um, Grafton High School Honor Society and candidates for the Honor Society, including Dana Sun, um, which is, which is great. Um, they raised, um, you know, a, a good amount of money, which is very much needed. Um, so, um, for folks that don't know, um, the friends, um, you know, the friends, uh, raise money and, you know, support programs at the library. Uh, the biggest, um, line item being like museum passes, like, that really, you know, helps, and the library does count on contributions from the friends to help fund, so ju- you.
And it's significant.
Yeah, it is significant. So, uh, on average, usually the friends will give about ten thousand dollars a year. Uh, this year, um, the, you know, ongoing book sale, you know, we, we're not able to, to have that. The friends were not able to have that, but, um, but still, um, they raised, um, you know, they raised, you know, a good amount of money, you know, this past weekend, so. And, um, and it's, yeah, and it's, you know, and people are very happy with it. Um, so the friends are meeting again uh, next month on the tenth at seven-thirty. It's a, you know, Tuesday night via Zoom, um, so, um, so I will plan to attend, and again, we can have up to three trustees um, attend, and, um, um, and of course, uh, we would love to have Tom, you know, attend, like, the friends are, you know, very appreciative when the director's able to participate as well.
Thank you, Carrie, uh, for all your efforts and dedication into this. I think it's one of these things that, um, there's so much work and effort, not only that one push, just coordinating all of this throughout the year, and, and this particular, this particular, um, weekend is something that a ton of people actually look forward to.
They do, like, P, I know Tom was saying, like, people are like, why do you have any books? And then people, and people also are excited to be able to donate their books too, like, they're like, oh, shoot, I missed the window to bring my books back. So, so we're looking forward to having the Friends Corner, you, back to what it's intended for to be, you know, to have the tables for people to be able to enjoy the space and, you know, buy, you know, ongo- do the ongoing book sale, and then be able to do more frequent, you know, book collections as well, but, um, but, you know, again, the friends generously, you know, um, allowed the, um, children's room to, you know, to use that for children's materials for borrowing, and that's part of the reason why those circulation numbers have been pretty good, you know, for the, for the children's materials, because that, cause they were able to use those, those shelves, so.
So, but. I'm sure both, everyone's gonna be looking forward to having both spaces back.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, we can't, yeah, we definitely can't wait. And then I think the hope is to have another, um, book sale in the spring, like, you normally would, that, that would have to be, you know, scheduled and everything, but, but no, but it's a great team, you know, we have, you know, like, Marianne and Erin and Ellen, Jackie, Nicole, um, you know, but it's, you know, really, you know, great team of people that, you know, love, you know, Betsy Walden, like, yeah.
Not to put you on the spot, but how much came in? A, a good amount.
We made, yeah, so, um, yeah, so it was, um, more than the back-to-school book sale last year. Um, I, um, I don't have the exact figures, cause, you know, I'm, um, you know, I might lease on, but I, you know, it was over twenty-five hundred dollars it was raised, so.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
Tom, do you need to talk to us about the, um, estimate for the doors, the locking of the doors?
That's coming up.
On here a little bit later, actually.
Okay, fine. I didn't know if we ever looked at.
All right, uh, any more discussion on friends update?
No, I think that is it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just point out, and it was kinda mentioned, but the reopening of the children's room will unlock, you know, a good portion of the bottom floor of the library when that, when that happens.
Yep.
That for adult programming as well.
Yeah.
Yes, definitely.
Hasn't been able to.
Yeah.
Take place as, as robustly as we'd like to.
Okay. Uh, staffing update, Tom?
Um, I will just say that we have two openings available. We currently have two openings available, one for a, uh, a, um, in our children's department, a full-time position, also a full-time position as a library admin assistant.
Have you received any candidates yet for the children's position?
We have just gotten the posting together, and so we're gonna start posting that.
Okay. Anything else on staffing update?
Well, I guess just the other, um, item is, um, Cindy is, um, so, who, so one of the members of our children's team is out, um, and she is out sick, so you dug, you had suggested that we might, like, you wanna do like a, a card or something for her, so, um, so, if we wanna do that, yeah.
Okay, um, is that something we should, uh, delegate out right now, or?
I mean, she's been out for a few weeks, so, um, you know, but we don't have, we only have four of us right now, so maybe.
Okay, I'll, um, I'll take that one, and I'll, I'll figure out what to, what to do about that, if that's okay.
And I'm willing to contribute to it.
Okay, yeah.
And no dog is too, so, yeah, we could.
Okay, I'll figure something out, and I'll run it by you, Carrie, and then we can.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we can talk about that, okay. Uh, sorry, just give me one second to write that down. Okay. All right, moving on, uh, director assessment update from Doug, but I think Carrie, you were gonna take it.
So, um, so Doug and I, um, so basically, what Doug is doing is reaching out to each of the, um, department heads, and just scheduling, you know, kind of a one-on-one or one, two-on-one session, um, with them. So, um, Doug and I actually were able to meet with, um, our, the head of our children's, you know, library services, and I know that he's working to schedule additional meetings with the rest of the, of the, of the team. Um, so I, I think that he, uh, would appreciate having another trustee participate in the session. I told him I'm willing to participate in additional sessions, but it also is nice, you know, to have other folks, you know, mix in, but it depends upon the availability, obviously, of, uh, you know, of the manager, you know, Doug's availability, and then the rest of our availability. So, uh, Doug is traveling this week, but I'm sure, you know, when he gets back, um, he'll, he'll be back on, like, you know, trying to schedule those.
Okay.
So, so basically, once all of the, once all of the one-on-one sessions are held, or the two-on-one sessions are held, then, um, then, you know, we'll, you'll kind of, you'll review, you know, the feedback and, you know, provide feedback, you know, to Tom, you know, based upon what we've, what we've gathered.
Okay. Um, yeah, actually, so I thought I'd missed the boat on that one, but I will, I'll, I'll volunteer for that as well, to, uh, to join in on those.
Wonderful.
Discussions.
I'm sure Doug would very much appreciate that.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on that? Okay, um, walkabout, so the, uh, Chris, Christopher Belton and Aaron Vanesteen are not present today. I know Aaron had sent his thing, Roger, did you have that handy? The, uh, was there anything that needed attention? I meant to read it, but I did not get a chance to, um.
All right, um, let's see. I, I think looking at these, aside from cosmetics, I would call attention and question whether any of this, uh, is a safety hazard, or could result in, you know, someone getting hurt or anything like that, um. Bench corrosion, cosmetic, or is that structural? I don't know.
Is that?
What bench?
Did it say bench, or did it say?
Children's patio.
Children's, oh. What? Do you mean, do they, do they, they must mean the, um, thing that's built into this, into the, um, into the hill. I did.
You saw?
Okay.
So that, that, so, I, I simply call attention to that and wonder what is meant by that corrosion. Is that, is that, is that cosmetic? Paint chipping, or is it a, um, is it something that, that's degraded to a point that it could pose a hazard?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we, why don't I reach out to Chris and Aaron, um, and maybe, yeah, maybe we'll defer this one to next time, cause they did include a link to some pictures as well, um. But if, I, I doubt that there's anything there than.
And then, uh, teen patio, wet sandbags impeding door access. Um, if, if we're talking teen patio.
I thought those were supposed to be moved.
Yeah, so.
Were they?
But I think there is still one over by one of the doors, right, that?
So the question is, is that if it's impeding door access, it's impeding door egress, and so.
No.
Yeah.
It's not in a good place. I don't think what I thought was there.
I had brought up the issue, like, on the other side with the, um, with the, um, where the musical instruments are, that the sandbags, um, ideally would be placed farther away from just, just outside the door. I, um, just don't want them to be a tripping hazard, you know, especially the little kids running around in that side, or, um, you know, that, that anything that is that high or tall, um, is not in the general vicinity of, of, of a footpath, so, so, um, so the wet, uh, the, the sandbags, I would be on the teen side, but also, um, on the, um, the backside of the building as well, ide- ideally, that, um, you know, those be moved.
Why aren't they there because of their, in, in case there's rain?
No, in case there's rain, I mean.
Has anybody really confirmed all that?
Well, so, okay, so this is something actually that just came to my mind.
Right.
Um, there, I believe, Tom, there was a little bit of water that came in, into the children's room.
Recently.
Recently, right? And so, I believe, was it, um, Peralta done a lot of work with the drainage there?
No, Peralta didn't do the drainage, no.
Who did the drainage?
It was, no, they did the mulching, I believe.
They did mulching, but William, um, worked, wasn't William working, the, yeah, I thought William worked with them, cause the drains, there's something that they had to do with the drains.
Yeah, so I, I do know, uh, that they essentially replaced a section of the mulch with, like, essentially a stone drainage area, so when the, when the water flows in there, it's not gonna carry the mulch into there, but I think it got overwhelmed again, uh, two weeks ago, or, or a week or two ago.
Yeah.
Um, again, I was out of town, so I think I'm not allowed to leave town anymore, cause every time I leave town, that happens, but.
Just so I know when you're going.
Yeah, but, um, but maybe, uh, maybe a remedy there is to completely replace that entire section of mulch with stone. Um, so if that wasn't someone that we had do that, is that, would that fall to you, Tom, to reach out to, to the DBW or, or Evan and see what he had done?
I, I could find out what was, you know, who made that decision. That was done before I was here.
Right, yeah.
So.
So you're talking about the mulch that's along the wa- window?
Yes, and there's a drain.
Doug did mention that to me.
Yeah, there's a drain in, like, in the center of that little mulch garden, and it, I think it was made a lot better with the stones that were put in there, but I, I almost think we just need to replace that, like, a whole, let's say, six-by-six section of that mulch, where that is, with stones, cause the stones don't go anywhere.
I think it goes the length of the windows, doesn't it?
The mulch goes the whole side of that building.
Yeah, but the, the concern is that it, where the, where the drain is, it sticks up out of the mulch, and with, with, we had a lot of rain fast.
Right.
And it, it gathered and it pushed all the mulch, so that the mulch was all
Okay.
up around the drainage, um, and then, uh.
So that needs to be taken care of right away, because this could happen any day.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I got out there and I cleared it out, so it's, it's, it's pretty well clear at the moment.
So we need, okay.
You know, and, you know, barring, you know, another torrential, um.
Don't tempt me, Tom.
Yeah, well, I think we're good.
Yeah.
There's a large river stones, so, but we're not talking about, some, we're talking about the river stones.
No, these are bigger, yeah.
The bigger, yeah, okay.
But I thought this whole, I mean, I know, I don't know if this is a place to talk about it, but I thought we were gonna make sure that a plan has been done to ensure that those doors will not let the water come back in, cause if we just get this room all set up and ready to go, if there's another torrential rain, we're gonna be in the same position.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But that's part of another conversation.
Okay.
In that, um, so we do have ongoing, uh, dampness in the teen room.
Right.
Which we've discussed.
I'm concerned about that.
And then, again, after this recent incident, when John was away, um, we had a little moisture inside on the carpet, there, you know, if you, about an, an inch in from the door, which, you know, is not a lot, torrential rain, mulch, but it's still water inside. So, uh, I know that the town administrators are scheduling to have somebody come to look at the door on the teen side, that was already in the works. We've added to that, that they will stop on the other side to take a look at that door as well.
Yeah, and I think what we need is, like, if there's, if we need to have funding for that, we need to know, like, what is, what's the request for the funding, you know, so that's great that the, it's great that the conversations are going on, and then that would be the next logical step, is that if they do deem that we need, which I, I, I hope they do say that we need to replace it, because I, I think they need to be sure of.
Librarians said the water came underneath the door. I'm just afraid if the same thing happens in four or five ye- not, even five months, uh, we'll be in the same boat. And no, and we haven't done anything. I know you are, but.
I would say the phrase "water came in under the door" is not accurate.
Okay.
You mean, you mean the original?
You mean with the big, with, when we had the August eighteenth thing?
No, no, I.
No, 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 I'm just worried about, I'm worried about that, because I think that could happen any day, right? And now that we got the community room almost, the community room's getting, is done, and now we're getting the children's room, can, we were, we had talked about this, and nothing's been done.
Well, I think that there were two things.
Well, I know they're doing that, but I just don't know if that's gonna take care of that amount of water.
The cameras on that August eighteenth storm of, of twenty-twenty-three did not exactly capture every single angle of what, but we know, we, we think that, that the burms that were put on South Street.
Yeah.
Uh, would somehow remediate or, or, or redirect the water flow that, um, would have otherwise in twenty-twenty-three, we think that a lot of that water.
Went right down the hill.
Went right down the hill, and the other thing is that.
I haven't heard that. That's the first time anyone's mentioned that. I know South Street was flooded.
Right, and so, but if you drive by, you'll see that there's a, an asphalt berm.
We, we heard it in one of our meetings, I don't know, maybe.
And then the other thing is that that industrial, what we call industrial cheese cloth, had impeded the amount of gallons per minute that that, those, those storm drains could take, and that if we then remediate it further, as you pulled all that mulch away, and we do address it with the river stones, I think that three-fold, that three-tiered approach would significantly, uh, you know, reduce the risk of that happening again.
We're not at the same risk that we were before.
But the, but the other thing is too, is that.
But we still.
Let, let us not forget the discussion that we had in, in, uh, a meeting here, where, um, not, there was some question of not only is
Yeah.
the whole area flat, but there was some speculation that at one or more spots, that the the walkway actually tilted ever so slightly toward the building.
Yeah, yeah, the gradient seems to be.
The gradient.
Pointing against us, yeah.
Yeah, i- in, in, so not only is it away, or at worst, flat, but even worse, um, yeah, that, that, it's a worst-case scenario, so I don't know how that's going to be addressed, but that's something that we can't.
Well, so, so Tom, Tom has an action item to follow up on mulch to stone, or further remediation to just
Yep.
help with that. It sound, I mean, it seems like the berm helped, it seems like the stones that are there already did help
Completely.
to a degree.
Yeah.
Um, so, a- and there's someone coming to look at both doors.
Right.
So I think that's.
If, if the doors are not sufficient.
Right.
Okay.
Well, what we have been told is that they were deemed to be sufficient doors for the type of building, but we wanna make sure that they really are gonna stand up to, you know, you know, this type of, you know, occurrence, you know, so.
Cause we know that there's, things have changed.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, we were told there, there were the appropriate doors, they're just not meant. Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, we were told there, there were the appropriate doors. They're just not meant to hold back standing water. Um, I think the teen room, they say there, there's something that's supposed to come down when the door shuts and the teen room one has been rusted out, but, but even there then, I think it's not meant to hold back standing water. So, let's, um.
The teen room issue seems to be related to a gutter issue.
That's what I think so.
Right.
And so, uh, there, there is hope that by fixing that would alleviate the issues that we're getting in the teen room.
Yeah, and that's on the books too.
The other side, there are not gutters, so that's not what's happening there.
Yeah.
But, um, I.
The door just seems to need to be replaced probably or, or.
It, it may very well be that, yeah.
The gutters, though, is there someone coming to look at that?
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
All right, and I think that's all we can really do for now. Um.
Mulch is overrated.
I know, right? Um. Uh, I don't, I don't like mulch, but anyway, um, just as a side note, I'll, I'll just add, uh, this is a great update, Tom. Thanks for putting this together. Uh, but I'll also say that you don't have to hold on to anything either. Like if we, if you get updates on any of these things, feel free to.
Well, yeah, I, I kind of had a similar, so I think it would be helpful, especially where like we have these things going on with the children's room. Like even, it doesn't have to be as extensive as the director's report, which is, which is great. But like even like at the end of the week, if you could just, you know, kind of like send an email to the trustees and just say, um, you know, children's carpet, you know, was installed, you know, planning to move, you know, um, uh, furniture back next week, just to keep us in the loop as to what's going on. Um, it, that doesn't, that doesn't have to be something ongoing forever, but while we're in this stage where we have these major things, you know, and, you know, with this focus on the children's room, just to keep us in the loop, that would, I would really appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I think the, I think the rest of the board, it would be helpful for all of us and, and probably eliminate a lot of questions too.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the other last thing on the walkabout is, and I don't know what it's, what it means in this context. On the front entrance, it says brick ablation. I mean, does that mean unevenness? What, what do they mean by ablation? I don't know. I.
I, I do not know what that word means.
Ablation, how do you spell it?
A B L A T I O N. I've only seen that in the context of cardiac arrhythmias.
Ablation.
Um, I know there is, uh, the stonework on the stairs, which there was some like erosion on that.
This mentions brick and, and I don't know what it means. Uh, the, is it a separation or is it an unevenness? I don't know. As long as there's no tripping hazards, that's, you know, in other words, there's a lot of stuff that, uh, in our walkabouts that is from a prior, is a prioritization standpoint, cos- cosmetic. And so just at this walkthrough, I was just kind of looking and checked off those areas that could be like tripping hazards or things like that.
I have, uh, the removal of snow and ice by melting or evaporation typically from Glacier or Iceberg. I feel like there was some, um, whitening on some of the brick, maybe from salting and stuff, uh, from prior years, but.
Is that what you mean?
Maybe that's what it was in relation to, but I don't think, um, yeah, I, I think we can move on from that.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion of the walkabout? All right, uh, new library door locking system.
So, um, we've had an ongoing issue with the locking system at the, at the library. Um, uh, that there had been some issues with it previously, but then in June, there was the power outage that seems to have really knocked the system out. Um, the, uh, the town looked into the idea of moving to a different software system to handle the, uh, overall, uh, locking of all the doors. Um, so, um, there's a, there's a company that, that, that most of the municipal buildings in town all happen to use, and we do not. For some reason, it was decided that, uh.
Was that Purinton? Was that Al Purinton?
That's, that's who everybody is with.
Okay.
Um, but the library decided in, in setting up the new library to go with a different company, and, uh, we have not had good experiences with that system or with dealing with the company.
Does, does the door locking tie in it all to the counters, like with, like the people counters? Okay, that's completely separate.
That's, that's separate. That's separate.
The architect must have decided that, the building construction committee, we don't know.
And if I'm not mistaken.
It really wasn't the library. It was whoever oversaw the library.
And didn't we discuss in our prime meeting said, that, um, this company that we use was far enough away that every single service call was like a thousand or two thousand bucks? Some crazy number. All right, okay, whereas Purinton is on Grove Street in Worcester.
And honestly, they've been great because, uh, they've been better at helping us than this other company.
Sorry.
Um, who, uh, when we call, we are charged an exorbitant amount and, uh, and, and not given any help. So we're not, we're not calling them anymore.
Right.
Um, because they would just redirect us to salespeople who would try to sell us additional software. Um, which was not very convincing, convincing.
So we still chaining the doors exterior?
Yes, yeah, there's a, so actually, there's a, there's a, a one-page procedure on how to lock the, the building. And you have to put this, um, this big stick in.
Bar.
That's going to change, right?
There is a, right, there is a procedure that the staff is, is required to go through, uh, for unlocking in the morning, which is primarily done by the, uh, the fantastic maintenance crew, Joe and Tom, who come in. Um, and then in the evening, when the library is closing, the library staff is required to do it. Um, and, uh, it is absurd.
Have you received calls? Um, I know that some of the morning staff, they come in early, you know, that, uh, in, in advance of the building opening. And for some reason, I was, I was still on and was the go-to person for the alarm company. Can't tell you the number of times in the past year that I've met the, uh, Grafton Police Department in the parking lot and, and, uh, have you gotten called? I guess your name is now.
I switched that. Yeah, I, I, we took your name off.
But have you been receiving calls due to alarms going on?
Not as many, no, no.
In the morning, like nine fifteen, but it's because someone already is in and then just, like dispatch is supposed to know that this could be an issue?
But they have chain, they put, they actually, there's a, a chain that they.
No, after, no, but when, when they open up, this, the alarm has gone off or they've been called in between nine and ten o'clock.
We've had none of that.
Okay.
Because we're already in the building. We're already there and the alarm is disabled.
But there was sometimes that it wasn't disabled.
No.
And that was recent, probably in the last month or so.
But they have to actually do, like, you, you have to go to the, um, what's it called? The breaker, you have to turn off two of the breakers, like to.
In order to get the ADA compliant, uh, doors on.
Yeah, at seven and nine, they, they have to switch those off as part of the closing procedures. It's, it's quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, we don't want to have to do this anymore. This is, this is, uh.
Are we under a service contract? Are we beholden to some type of service contract?
No.
No.
Okay, and, and, but if we go to Purinton and we, are they going to be able to work with the existing software? Are you saying that, well, we would totally revamp the whole software to their system?
Right, so we would, we would switch over to their software. We would switch over the circuit boards, but all the wiring is already in place. So we had a representative come out from Purinton and looked through the building. He saw what was in place, what would, what needed to be done. Um, we showed him the, the circuit board, I guess you would call it. Um, wiring throughout the whole building is there. He said he would just, they would just need to take out the old and put in theirs and, uh, and then set us up with the new software.
So at what cost, do you know? Did they give you an estimate?
It's in his report.
It's in the report and it is, uh, six hundred and twenty dollars.
I thought I, then I missed that.
Second last page.
Yeah. Of the report. Page three of the report.
There you go.
And, and all right, pie in my face, it's in bold.
Yeah, you know, well, I didn't make it.
Well, there are a few things in bold.
I didn't make it a special color or anything. But I did want it to jump out, but yeah, that's all right. Um, so that is the, uh, the amount to replace everything. That's, that's to get us completely set up.
All right, and so we're looking to have this funded from state aid, I guess?
Or, or the.
I think, I think.
I think from the.
Lead money?
I, I think it was from Leeds money, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, Leeds money, yeah.
Okay, so do we need to do, make a motion?
I'll entertain a motion.
I think we should. We got to get this done.
Okay, do you want to make the motion?
Oh, okay. I mean, make a motion that we vote on to, um, to fund the replacement of the current alarm system to the new one, which is the Puritan Corporation, which the entire, um, municipal, um, buildings all use. So, and it would be six thousand, six hun- six thousand, six hundred, two hun- I'm sorry, six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars.
From, from the Leeds fund.
From the Leeds fund, funding.
I, I second Dana's motion.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any, uh, discussion?
Um, one, one comment, um, uh, if, is there a possibility that this could end up being more? In other words, I know that sometimes we've ended up voting contingent, a little, like, and, you know, adding a certain percentage, um, in saying like, if we're all agreeable to it, up to seven thousand, do we think that there is a possibility or is that a hard number?
I was under the impression this is a hard number.
Okay, all right. Okay, um.
Famous last words, right?
Famous.
Um, would you like to amend the, uh? The, the motion?
Now it's going to go up, you know that.
Up to seven thousand?
I'd say eight thousand.
Oh, okay.
I would say eight thousand, because, because seven thousand dollars is only three hundred and eighty dollars extra.
Right, right, right.
And if something's four hundred dollars, then.
Right.
Do I have to do the whole thing over?
No, 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 I.
I'd just like to amend that, uh, that motion, um, to make it up to, up to eight thousand dollars.
You have a second?
I second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, and any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion made and passed, uh, so let's, uh, get a new alarm system.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
That's exciting that that's happening.
That is awesome, yeah.
And, uh, one of the, one of the concerns for this is that, uh, one of the, another element that is, that is controlled by the software system is the emergency buttons for the staff at their, at their desks. So.
That's pretty important.
I, I want to get this, and, and I also don't want to see a swing set chain around the door. I'm really tired of driving up in the morning and seeing that there.
I'm, I'm afraid someone's going to slip with that giant bar and it's going to go through the window.
Yeah.
And we're going to have another funding request.
We're on them, or, yeah.
Which, I mean, yeah, uh.
So this, should this happen fairly quickly then?
Yes, actually.
Excellent, excellent.
Seven to ten days after receipt of the order.
Seven to ten, uh.
Good.
Lead time materials is seven to ten days and the job usually takes about three days.
So we'll call.
So, I mean.
Yeah, so hopefully by next meeting, we'll.
You know, by the next meeting, we're going to have a new door.
So is it William or Evan or someone else? Uh, who's the point person? For you? William, okay. So I guess if, um, you let William know that we voted on up to eight grand from the Leeds money?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Exciting to actually have funding for, and then get something done with a hard.
I like that.
Yeah, um, you know, uh, maybe start, finish date. Um, this has just been such a pain.
Yep.
You know.
It's been.
It's been very frustrating for the staff.
Thorn in the side, library.
How long has that been happening?
So, uh, the power outage was, uh, my second week here, it was like June tenth or so, right, right around there. Um, but they were already dealing with the, uh, chain and, and some of the other elements.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, um, so any, any further discussion on the doors? No, all right, so, did you have something?
Well, I just, I don't know if you mentioned it, but I noticed in your report, you talked about, um, the HVAC and that we're no, is scheduled to start, um, installation of the defective HVAC u- units.
Yep.
Um, this week, right, that, um, so tomorrow and Friday and then September third and fourth, so that's wonderful news.
Yeah, and.
That was approved previously, and, um, so we just need to schedule it. Um, so, yeah, we're, we're set with that.
Awesome.
We'll come, come back and double check to make sure we didn't miss anything in your update, uh, for the director's report section.
That's in there.
Just to make sure. Um, but we'll move on to state aid assistance approval. So I think there's one item which we should, probably should be able to approve for, um, a conference for the New England Library Association, taking place at the end of October.
Yes.
And, uh, oh, is it you who is going, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So it's the New England Library Association, NELA, um, in October?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, and that's October twentieth through the twenty-second. Um, so I will make a motion to approve, um, funding for, um, Tom's attendance um, at the NELA conference in October, um, with funding coming from state aid. Um, the total request covering, um, the transportation, um, you know, meals and hotel is, um, one thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Um, so I guess is that, um, do we want to put any contingency in that or do we, what do we want to do on that?
No, I, I, I mean, this, this is a travel policy in, in place already. Um, I, I think, um, were you referring to maybe him, um, Tom, Tom, uh, writing a sort of a summary report after that or what were you referring to?
Um, no, I, I was just wondering, do we, do we need to put a little cushion in there?
A cushion of money.
When you said contingency, I thought you meant, all right, I, I.
Oh, no, no, no.
I misunderstood what you were saying.
Yeah, oh, no, um, so he's, so he's asking for.
Yeah, so we probably should.
One thousand five, I, I think, um, I would make a motion for up to seventeen hundred dollars. Like, just to give a little extra, because you never know, there could be some unexpected fees. Um, so a motion, um, for up to seventeen hundred dollars, um, to fund the trip.
All right, I second the motion.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, did, did you have something to?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you, no, good.
Thank you.
He needs to go.
Yeah, oh, do with things like that are very important, you need to.
It's actually in the long range, long range planning that I'm supposed to go.
Okay.
That's right, yeah.
So.
Um, but yeah, let us know.
It's a great, uh, opportunity for me to, uh, network with other directors as well.
Absolutely.
And it's close by, so that's cool.
Relatively, yeah.
Yeah, if you could give us like a couple minute update when you get back about, about those things, that'd be great as well.
I don't remember meeting.
Yeah, I imagine it'd be beautiful time of year too.
I think so, I think so.
Oh, yeah.
No, that'll see any of it, because I'll be.
So what day is the week? What's August, uh, pardon?
Uh, it's a Sunday through Tuesday.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
All right, so what I'm wondering is, um, who, is that, um, Winston meeting?
I don't know if I had.
Is it the twenty-first? Uh, you know, we could, if there's any questions or anything library related.
We should, we should look into that.
Yeah.
Let's look, let's figure this out while we're here, okay?
Yeah, is it the third Monday of the month of October? All town meeting?
We're going to find out.
I'm wondering, um, if that is on the town clerk's webpage.
Third Monday in October.
Would be.
That might be that, shoot.
Would be the twenty-first.
It's Monday, October twenty-first, yep.
Okay, so we better, uh.
Um.
So if there's anything library related, I, all right, so the, So if there's anything library related, I, alright, so the, the town charter calls for all department heads to be at town meeting, but you know what though? It, it's not always adhered to, um, I can't, I can't imagine that, uh, anyone would somehow keep you or recommend keeping you from going to this just because it falls on.
I just think we need to know if there's anything that we should be prepared for.
And maybe designate one of us to attend, um, if there's anything library related, uh.
We usually all attend if we can, sometimes.
Oh, yeah, we're all in attendance, yeah.
We need to speak on behalf of the library or something.
Yeah, we should have Doug, we should let Doug know that he might have to, and if there's anything that's coming up.
Yeah.
But, but I shouldn't, shouldn't stop him from going to that conference, cause that's like a major conference, he should.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yes, attended.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion on state aid assistance approval? Alright, hearing none, um, policy update, uh, I meant to prepare something, but I didn't really get a chance to, um, I think the basic update is really just that, um, Tom and Aaron and I met again and we started going through some of the policies that need to be uh amended, um, I don't have, like I said, I don't have specifics on the policies, but I think there, there's probably a couple policies that are gonna be coming soon, maybe to the next meeting or to the one after, um, regarding updated policies, so. Um, I think the plan is to send those out to everyone ahead of time and then vote on them during the meeting and then.
Just be a nay or nay.
Yeah, and yea or nay, and, and to reduce discussion during this meeting, uh, cause we're, we are coming up on nine o'clock, for example. Um, and then if there is things that we need to go back and fix, you know, per the board's feedback, then we can, we can certainly go do that. Alright, uh, any other questions about policy updates for now?
Who is, um, the policy subcommittee is a four-person committee, who is the library employee? There is none right now.
There is none right now.
It's just three.
Yeah.
And then there were three.
Yep.
Alright.
So I think there were, there were, I, I think there was maybe a plan to have the new administrative assistant, so. When we get a new administrative assistant, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll revisit that.
Alright.
Okay, anything else?
I'll mention that, um, and this is, I don't know where it would fall, but, um, Tom reintroduced himself or introduced himself to the town, um, during la- uh, uh, last night's select board meeting. Thank you, Tom, uh.
Righted me and I was happy to speak.
Yeah, it was a, uh.
That's great.
It was a really, uh, really nice discussion and, uh, everyone was, uh, had commented how they had a good feedback. They'd heard good feedback and, and it was, it was really cool to see your enthusiasm and passion, um, especially in the trying circumstances, so.
I can turn it on when needed.
There you go, there you go, so, you know, thank you for doing that.
That remains.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that, Roger, um, director's report, so did we happen to miss anything, um, important that you wanted to call attention to, Tom?
A lot of this has been covered in other areas from the agenda, but, um, I just wanted to give some, uh, accounting of, of what we're doing in the library, um, besides like broken locks and, and such, because we're doing some really great things as well. Um, total circulation for, uh, July was, uh, over twelve thousand items circulated, which was up from eight thousand in May and eighty-eight hundred in June, so we, we've definitely seen an uptick, which is really nice, um, and the, the breakdown of children's, children's books predominantly, because that's just how it always is. Um, the total number of circulation, uh, was down considerably from, from, uh, uh, it went up considerably, but it was down from last year, I'll say, um, which makes sense, because so much of our circulation comes from our children's room. And so the limited resources that we have available because of the children's room being closed, um, really put a, a, a a re- a constraint on how much we can circulate there, so, uh, another reason, as if we needed another reason to get the children's room back open, it's also because people are just looking for the resources. Um, patrons added, um, we had a hundred and four patrons added, we've been really giving a push to that.
That's tremendous.
Which is, I was, I was pretty stunned, that was, that's a lot for a month, um, and that's not even this next month coming up, which is National, uh, National Library Card Sign-up Month, so we have a big push planned for that, so, uh, social media, webpage, um, things to put around the library and, and outreach, um, so we're gonna be really promoting that, so. It seems like, gosh, doesn't everybody in town already have a card, cause so many people are getting them, but I bet there are a few more out there, and so we're gonna find them. Um, uh, electronic resources like overdrive be- remain very popular, um, museum passes, not surprising, we saw thirty-six go out in June, we saw sixty-one go out in July, this is.
That's great.
These, these are the months that we buy museum passes for, you know, when people are out of school and, and really using them, so it's, it was really great to see the, the town respond so well to that. Um, programming remains strong, even in our limited capabilities, we've kept that up and the staff's doing a great job finding alternate places. Um, uh, movement programs, uh, in the parks, which has been really popular, um, so, uh, so that's been really, really positive. Uh, as well as our summer reading program, we had a hundred and ninety-six children registered, um, re- returning, uh, the, the read-to-be tokens was, a- as soon as they hit certain ticks on their, on their chart, they got to come in and, and put a, a token in the, in the machine and get something out of that, which was really popular, we also had that for adults too. We had thirteen adults of, and, uh, participate in the, in summer reading program, which was pretty nice.
Uh, I had a quick question about that, actually.
Of course.
Is that meant to be for adults, and was it just not advertised, like, is there a reason we didn't have more adults participating in that?
It, uh, so, um, it was, it was not initially planned, um, and so it was something that, uh, was, um, put together because we, we just didn't like the fact that we didn't have one, so, um, planning something like this is very intensive and, uh, the time leading up to when it would have been planned was the time when the library found itself without the director and we were dealing with so many other issues, uh, with the building, so, um, it was, it was, uh, it was one of those areas that just had been initially dropped, um, other programming for adults continuing, we have plenty of book clubs and, and, and things such as that, but this was just something that wasn't initially intended to be done, um, with conversation with the adult services librarian, she decided she could get something together, we had additional resources from the children's and the teens that would be applicable for adults, and so we decided to, to have that as well.
Okay.
So, w- would we have liked to have seen it a little higher? Yeah, definitely, um, but this, that was, that was with virtually no advertising and, uh, and, and kind of, uh, uh, a, a put together plan at the end.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, uh, more, more on plan next year, so.
Gotcha.
We'll be in a different place next year.
Yep.
And so as far as numbers, um, it was good to see that the numbers had really, a lot of the numbers were maintained at a higher level than we thought they would be, which was really nice, um, so aside from the, unless I'm missing something here, um, aside from the dollar amount of spend, did the MBLC, as far as this whole idea of maintaining and increasing numbers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, that dis- did that discussion take place where they understand that if our numbers weren't holding up to last year's that, that there's sort of an extenuating reason for that that is acceptable to them, that also doesn't jeopardize anything, aside from the dollars?
So, there are, there are two main reports that are submitted to MBLC and one is the heiress report, which is, which is the one I did, I did recently.
Right, right.
Yep.
Um, and then there is also the state aid report, which is due October fourth, so the heiress report, um, is, you know, the, the, I'll, I'll say it this way, the one we tend to focus on is, oh my gosh, how much money do we have to spend? And that's the state aid report.
Right.
The one that's coming up, um, but also, and, and arguably just as important, is what we're, what we're doing with all that money, right? And so the heiress report re- reports on where that money is being spent, so yes, we are going to prove to them that we spend a certain amount of money, but we're also showing them, we added so many items into the collection.
Right.
And we, uh, offered this many programs, uh, and so, uh, circulation of different materials, and so it's very extensive, it's a, it's a real comprehensive report that shows, um, it was thirty-three pages, um, and it covers like, you know, what are the educational backgrounds of every single person who works in the library? It's comprehensive, so heiress, uh, the heiress report really demonstrates what's going on in the library. Um, preparing for that and coming up, uh, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, I've had a lot of conversations with MBLC and you can read into this whatever you want, but when I call them, they know who I am and they know who Grafton is already, so my first phone call and I said, I'm the new director of the Grafton Public Library, I didn't have to tell them the story.
Right.
They knew wha- who Grafton was and were, are very well aware of the challenges that we faced in the past year, all of the, well, I mean, you know, primarily the children's room and the lack of a, of a, of a permanent director for a certain amount of time, um, so yes, they, they're very well aware of that, um, they've been fabulous working with me to make sure that I had all the information I needed, um, and, you know, w- we just need to see where we are, right, so the heiress report is in and that seems fine, um, the state aid report will go in and then we will, we'll see where we are with that.
But you don't have any concerns, like, you're not like, oh, shoot, we seem like a little low or anything like, based upon what you've seen, I mean, you have to wait to get feedback, but you.
So, um, I'm gonna preface it with this, there are, there are different increments with MBLC, so if you meet a hundred percent of what you're supposed to meet, you get full funding and you're certified.
Mm-hmm.
If you meet ninety percent of what you were supposed to meet, you're still a certified library and you get funding, it's just at a reduced rate. If you meet under ninety percent, then we have issues, because then you're not a certified library, you're not gonna receive funding. I am very, very confident that we meet at ninety percent. I am losing sleep about where we are in between ninety percent and a hundred percent, um, we're not like at a hundred and twenty percent, I'm sure of that, but, um, I am very confident that we did, I know we did as be- as well as we possibly could have, given the circumstances, um, and they know that as well, um, and I am, I am, you, as we see with like, well, there's encumbered money that we're still kinda waiting to spend and that will kind of count towards this, so there are still some areas that I think we can shore up a little bit, but I know, I'm, I don't wanna go on record, but I am sure that we met the ninety percent, guaranteed with that, um, and I am very confident that we're gonna do well with the hundred percent, also, um, I've, I, I took a webinar about doing the state aid report and learned some great things that we can also count towards that, which we were unaware of.
Yeah.
Which really helps, so there were some things with the heiress report that I was able to count, which helped us.
Good.
Uh, but there are also, also some elements such as, dare I bring it up again, the copying machine, because we have the extensive copying machine that we have that does faxing and does scanning, we get to use a certain percentage of that overall maintenance plan to reduce from what is considered our overall budget.
Okay.
Which we never knew before, so.
This is really good.
You know, there, there are things like that, that I'm, I'm, I'm investigating every possible, where can we find another fifteen cents to, to get us, you know, to where we need to be, so, um, we're good, we're good.
So, uh, that, that, that's good to hear and thank you for finding, I guess, found money, um, and I'm just hoping that the MBLC can find itself in its graces to, I don't know if they're allowed to, if they have to go by the strict letter of the law or their, their, uh, procedures and policies, but I would hate to see that the flooding, which through no fault of our own, could result in a sort of fiscal smackdown, for lack of a better term.
Don't call it a smackdown, please, come on, people are listening to this, they don't know, it isn't the way we do, that, you know, you heard what he said.
It's a smackdown, no, no, it's excellent figures, I'm just wondering, uh, you know, the delta of if they.
We don't wanna use the term delta.
Please.
Alright.
I think we've said enough about this.
Okay.
Waterways.
Alright, that's true, that's true, no pun intended, um, but, but that, what could amount to, let's say, five thousand, six thousand, whatever amount, I, I think we get somewhere in the tune of ninety thousand or something like that, and, and ninety percent of that is eighty-one thousand, so. If there's a shortfall, I would hope that, um, that MBLC has a, has a mechanism to sort of give us some sort of reprieve on that, um, even if it's contingent on ramping things up and overage, you know, once we're back on, online.
I'm confident that, that Tom will do everything he, and he is doing everything he can, so, I don't.
And we appreciate your efforts, Tom, very much.
And, and I'm not doubting your skills or your, your efforts, I'm simply, in a public meeting that we only have once a month.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, just bringing it up that, you know, uh, uh, you know, just, just hoping that, that we're not gonna have to search for money again, because, you know.
So I, I will just say that, so, uh, I've been in close contact with MBLC, they're, they, they don't go into this saying, and if you don't mean it, we'll figure it out, they go into the saying, fill out the report and let's see where you are.
Okay.
Okay, there are, um, there are, I mean, first of all, there's the ninety percent cutoff, so that is an extenuating gimme anyway, um, but then they, they have also mentioned, and they've mentioned them in the instruction webinar, that, um, there, there is a process to apply for waivers if there are extenuating circumstances, so, I'm not, I'm not looking there right now.
Right.
Right now, I'm looking at, I want to, I wanna get this report filled out.
Sure.
And get it in and see where we are.
Thank you.
And see what we need to, what we need to do moving forward, um, and then we'll, then we'll, we'll, we'll do what is, what is necessary.
When's the report due again?
October fourth.
Okay, thank you.
So I just see one last item that I think that you're gonna ask us about, Tom, which is, um, a, exciting day tomorrow.
Oh, yes, yeah, sorry, so let me just go through, uh, the, the report again, I don't think there's anything.
Staff development day tomorrow.
Uh, ongoing issues with HVAC, sorry, one second, um, they're, they're on their way, so we, we got that, that's being taken care of.
Yep.
Um, front door, we took care of, and then, yes, staff development day is taking place tomorrow.
And you need funding for the lunch.
Um, well, um, so we, we, we know we can't, we can't pay for that with state aid, because you're not allowed to pay for food with state aid, so.
So you wanna use the gift fund?
So the idea was that, uh, if, if things had moved in a different direction, we would be replenishing the gift fund and that would be paying for the.
So is there no money left in the gift fund, is that the?
I don't think there is.
Hmm, okay, uh, but I.
But I, but, I, and I will, I will just, I'll plead that I'm, I'm just not aware of all the funds that we have, so if, if you know of another area, like, oh, but you could take that from, I mean, obviously not Leeds or anything like that, but, or something that needed, that would need to be voted upon, but, um.
Well, we said the, um, copier expense is eight hundred dollars a month.
Yes.
So maybe just to cover this car- coming month, we could vote to put eight hundred dollars into the gift fund to cover the lease expense from state aid to cover that, or?
Um, I don't, I don't know if it has to do with the, the copiers per se, but we, we could, well, well, I guess let me ask first, it, there are multiple gift accounts, right, Dana, do you happen to know anything about the gift accounts?
No, I don't know what account, I think that he's talking about a specific gift account that you, that the, they use a lot, right? The library uses a lot.
Right.
He's not talking, you're not talking about the accounts that we have, he's not talking about all the endowments we have, you mean those accounts, like those trust accounts?
Yeah.
I don't think he's referring to that.
Well, i- is that something that we could use?
That's, that's, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, but that, I mean, that's my ignorance in that, like, I just don't know what other, I don't know what funds and endowments we have, so.
We had a whole.
This is my first staff development day, so I'm not sure where this is paid for.
Oh, okay.
Previously, so if you say, you know, oh, well, there's an endowment that.
I don't know if there is.
Loves to use money for staff development.
The, um, I, I, I know Doug, Doug and other people have been in touch with somebody in the county who was giving us a listing of them, because we begin, we went through all that a while ago to figure out where all our monies were, so I think some, I know it's late in the day, but, um, there should be some, a person in accounting that can help you, do you want, want us to send it, I, do you want me to send a text to Doug and ask him if he knows who that person is? I know he's traveling, he texted me about something else today, most recently.
Uh, yeah, I'm just wondering what, what we can do right now, because this is happening tomorrow.
I know, well, I don't, I don't know, because we can't pay for it out of state aid, right?
Uh.
Doug did say it was not allowed, he knew that it wasn't allowed to be paid out of state aid, because it was for food.
Okay.
So we've ordered stuff that we don't know how we're gonna pay for, is that basically what it is or not?
This, this is for lunch for the staff development day for tomorrow, four hundred dollars.
Okay, and so it's four hundred and only four hundred, right?
Well, no, that's the estimate, but.
Yeah.
Alright.
Uh.
I was referring to that, what you were talking about, the gift accounts of the count, that you would use to pay the bills, but you, it was just called a gift account, so you don't know what account that was, yeah.
I only know it as the gift account.
Okay, I don't know which account they're referring to, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm sending Doug.
But we, but we think that money is depleted, right, like, we think that.
I believe so.
Okay. Okay. Um, I don't know, do we have any other ideas about this?
So, this wouldn't be at this table, but it would probably be a stretch to suggest that this would be, uh, capital campaign, um.
No.
No, I mean, that's just a stretch, I'll admit it right out of the gate.
We can't do that.
No. I didn't know if we've ever broached similar type of activities with that funding source.
So.
No.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna say that maybe we vote to, you know, may- if maybe someone can make a motion to, to, to fund this money out of the gift accounts, if there is something available that you're able to find out tomorrow morning, maybe Eileen would know there's any other ones.
I, you know, I, I can't say a hundred percent that the gift account is.
So.
Depleted.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion.
Well, sorry, like, can I hold you up one second?
All right.
Do, do we even need to approve that? If it's just the, the gift accounts?
I don't know, I don't know what accounts they're referring to. I've never heard to them called, I know there's this very, this, I've heard it this way, I don't think, I don't, I don't think it's the same. There's a small little gift, there's a gift account where people give money to the library if they wanna like, um,
Donate.
Donate a book in the honor of someone who's passed away, and I've heard it called a gift account, I haven't heard that before, so it's a new name for me.
Okay.
So we're referring to something that may not even exist as actual, like, a, an account?
Well, I think if Eileen mentioned it, it does.
She's paying, she pays invoices from it.
Yeah, so it must be, I don't know about it. So it's gotta be one of the library's accounts, then. She's paying all kinds of invoices, so she's not coming to us asking for money.
Right.
So should we make a motion to say that we are providing our approval to spend up to, I don't know, five hundred dollars from a gift account? And if there is, if you, if you go tomorrow and there's some kind of problem, then, I don't know, I mean, I, I think they can, I think they could, she can figure something out, right?
I, I mean.
They can pay that.
Yeah.
We could reimburse them.
They can pay it, and then we'll just find a way to reimburse it.
So is there a vendor that is expecting some payment within thirty days or something, or?
No, this is like, this is just food, it's like.
It's just for lunch, 'cause they're having.
No, that's what I'm saying, in other words.
No, tomorrow.
Are they getting it from Bushel and Pack or something, 'cause they know us.
They don't like Bushel and Pack.
I know, but Bushel and Pack knows the library, can it, can we say that we'll pay them in the next week or so? I mean, they probably.
I mean.
I don't think they would do that, especially.
I think they would.
Um, this was put on the library card, so it doesn't.
Okay.
Oh.
Doesn't need to be paid right now.
Okay.
All right.
So, so maybe we'll make a motion to say that we're, we're happy to support it, and then we'll, you know, we'll find, you know, appropriate funding.
Yeah, um, like I said, like, we need, I need to follow up on like the state aid balance and any other.
Yeah.
What, what?
The state, we can't, you, this would.
I know, but he's saying in general.
Right, but there's the other, um.
The other spending for the.
Yeah, we want to know, we should know what we have.
There's the other accounts that we have, I think, in the, I think, right, through, like, they're part of the town.
Yeah, there are, I mean, there are accounts, but there are tons of them, there's different, different people through the years have given different, like, the one is the Jerome, Jerome Wheelock account, and that one is basically used for building construction.
Okay.
So that's why I think we took some, we took, we funded some of the renovation out of that, right?
Okay.
The coupla. So, there, there's different purposes, some, there, some can be spent this or that way.
Okay, so we'll follow up on that one, then, uh, so.
So it's premature to accept a motion, or are we just going to, by consensus, just wait it out, because it's on the card, library card that's being paid for it, and, and so, we'll know what available accounts we have in those balances? Or do you wanna make, or as, as Carrie was starting to possibly make a motion, up to five hundred dollars contingent upon available balances?
Why don't we just do that?
Why don't we do that, just to, you know, show our support, because it's, you know, it's a staffer, it's a, um, staff development day, we want to have the staff development, and we wanna support the team, and if, you know, we should know what the accounts are, we're gonna work on doing that, so let's do that, and if we need to correct it next time, then we can do that. So I make a motion to fund up to five hundred dollars from the gift funds, um, for, on the staff, uh, development day tomorrow, so I hope you have a wonderful day, and the, the staff, you know, en- enjoy their lunch.
Have a second.
I second it.
All right, motion made and seconded, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
All right.
Motion made and pass. Uh, right, yes, enjoy staff development day.
So that means the library's closed, correct?
Tomorrow, and then it'll be open Friday and then close, is it closed Saturday and Monday?
It is, yes.
So it's three-day, three-day.
Yes, three-day weekend, okay, great.
All right, Tom, anything else you wanted to add?
I think that will cover it.
Okay, so that's it for the director's report, uh, no members of the public here, unless Bill, you have something to say.
It was like, wrap it up.
End the meeting. Uh, all right, so next meeting's, uh, policy subcommittee, I, I, I put TBD, but, um, I think it's, it's usually like every other Wednesday, so it's probably the eleventh of September, usually at seven PM at the library's conference room, uh, yeah, the library's, um, the, the larger conference room that's there, so I, I think that's when that's supposed to be, but I'll, I'll have to confirm with Tom and, uh, Aaron about that one. Uh, next meeting is September twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty-four, it's, uh, seven PM at Conference Room A. And anything else, anyone need to add?
Um, that, I think as an un- as a no longer necessary placeholder, I've noticed in the last few meetings, the executive session can be X-ed off, that's only one of the reasons of like seven that an executive session can be called.
Okay.
So that, that becomes like, um, that placeholder doesn't really need to be there any longer.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, I can, um, probably remove that next, for the next, uh, agenda.
All right, I move to adjourn, if you'll accept that motion.
Yeah, motion made and seconded, uh, by Carrie. Um, any discussion? All right, I, uh, call this meeting adjourned, or?
Take a vote.
Oh, vote to, vote, vote on the motion, all in favor? All right, aye, all right.
Do a six-hour drive tomorrow.